There we go, we're on. All right. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order tonight's regular City Commission meeting for October 18th, 2021. Before we do roll call, I think all of us up here would really like to welcome Tabitha back because David did not do great last time doing the job. So, could you give us a roll call, Tabitha, please?
Mayor Yob.
Here.
Commissioner Guthrie.
Here.
Commissioner Lewis is out tonight, and Commissioner Badwin?
Here.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
Present.
Thank you. Tonight, for invocation, we would like to welcome Pastor Stan Martin from the First Presbyterian Church.
And Commissioner Wilkinson said that I need to give you my address. 253 Post Road, for the record. Okay? All right. If you don't know me, which maybe you don't, some of you don't, because I'm new and I came during a pandemic, which means I'm just getting out. So, but I do want to thank you for the invitation to be part of this. Shall we pray? Most gracious and loving God, we thank you and begin with that spirit of gratitude. We thank you for the many blessings in life, for community blessings, for personal blessings, and for this commission that has gathered. And we pray for each and all of them and ask that you would give them a good sense of the needs of the city and all of its residents, that ability to work together in harmony even when there may be possibly disagreements. And we ask that you give them peace in their lives and joy in their service. We also pray for the agenda here this evening and that you will give them guidance in what will benefit those who live and work in and around El Dorado. And it is in your name that we pray. Amen.
Thank you very much. Would everyone please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Proclamations and recognitions are next, and we do have a proclamation tonight. So I'm going to read the proclamation, and then I think we have some people here that I get to give the awesome proclamation to. Whereas Kansas Upsilon Chapter of Alpha Delta Kappa began on December 15th, 1951 with seventeen charter members, and whereas Upsilon Chapter has remained steadfast in its purpose of recognizing outstanding women educators, and whereas the members of Upsilon Chapter have supported educational and charitable causes through donations to numerous altruistic projects at the local, state, and international level, excuse me, and whereas Upsilon Chapter members have created fellowship opportunities among women educators, which has fostered personal enrichment and professional growth, and whereas Upsilon Chapter has promoted the causes of world understanding and goodwill through its support of Alpha Delta Kappa's international efforts to achieve these ideals. Now therefore, I, Bill Young, Mayor of the City of El Dorado, do hereby proclaim Saturday, October 2nd, 2021, as Kansas Upsilon Chapter Day in El Dorado, and urge all citizens to support and celebrate the 70th birthday of this organization and its members. In witness thereof, I hereby, unto, set my hand and cause this official seal of the City of El Dorado, Kansas, to be affixed the 18th day of October, 2021. I wanted to just kind of introduce some of our, we've got some Upsilon Chapter members here. They invited me to come and help them celebrate their 70th birthday. It was really an honor to be there and get to see some of the teachers that I got to know when I went to school here. I think some of them were kind of happy to see me. I'm not sure. It's been quite a while, so I think maybe past has been forgiven. But we do have a proclamation. I'd like, if y'all could come up here, I can give you the copy of the proclamation. So here is a proclamation for... Thank you all for everything you guys do. We couldn't, or you wouldn't be where they are today. Awesome. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor.
You all get it?
Mayor Yob.
Yes. Oh, man, I haven't taken one good picture in my life. So... Personal appearances are opportunities for organizations or citizens to make special presentations before the City Commission. Such appearances are scheduled in advance of the meeting by calling City Clerk Tabitha Sharp at 316-321-9100 by 5:00 PM the Tuesday preceding the meeting. Presentations are limited to 10 minutes. Any presentations for information purposes only, no action will be taken. And Tabitha, it doesn't look like we have any personal appearances tonight. So move on to public comment. Public comments are persons who wish to address the City Commission regarding items that are not on the agenda and that are under the jurisdiction of the City Commission may do so when called upon. Comments on personnel matters and matters pending in court are not permitted. Speakers are limited to three minutes, and any presentations for information purposes only, no action will be taken. So do we have anyone here who would like to make public comment? Come on up. And you'll need to give us your name and your address for the record.
For the record. For the record. Steve Seymour, 810 Waco, El Dorado. I'm here representing not only myself, but American Legion Post 81, and I just want to offer kudos to those folks from your city staff and department heads and everybody that helped with the 150 fest. That was, you guys did an awesome job. I mean, kudos, guys. This guy's a beer runner deluxe. We couldn't have asked for anything else. I know a lot of the people that were involved have maybe never been involved in a festival or an event of this size before, and you guys nailed it. You nailed it. So, again.
Thanks, Steve. We appreciate that.
Appreciate that.
Anyone else for public comment? Go ahead, come on up, sir.
My first I met is Garia Thorburn, 1157 Sheldon. Okay, my problem is, I got pictured, but this is the only one that really mounts to anything. It's the south side of my road, and I try to, I can't get in my back gate because it grated it again, and this time I went about a foot and a half down. And as you can see, it's going to be kind of hard to get into my backyard from my double gate. I don't know if there's anything planned for that. Elliot, the street behind me is paved, and it redid Douglas. All the property to the south of me, Paul Haynes built, there's a double-wide driveway in the front of his house, it's paved, and there's a garage he added on the back, which is gravel, but it has a whistle in there, we're difficult down there. The house south of him has a drive with a whistle that real water will go until back up. Same way with the house behind me to the west, they have a whistle. I'd just like to see something done with it, a whistle put in, a different way of doing it, because every time they grate it, and then I'm expected to mow it, and you can't straddle that with a mower, so you're kind of on your side when you're mowing.
What's the address, sir?
My address?
Yeah, the address where this property is at?
1157 Sheldon, it's on the corner.
And this is in the back? Pardon, this is in the back or in the front?
It's on the side, south side.
On the side, okay.
About halfway back to my property, I have a lot and a half.
So that isn't Sheldon Street?
Yeah.
This is Finney.
Finney.
This is Finney between Sheldon and Ellis.
Right, okay.
It's one of those, okay. Okay. And you're saying that's a foot and a half down right there?
Pretty close to it.
Really?
Yeah. Well, you can see by the picture, it's pretty deep.
Well, no, yeah.
I didn't exactly measure it for you, you know.
Listen, I'll take your guesstimation. And is it on, is it on both sides that deep? I'm just curious, just on, just on your side?
The other side, here's the problem. The houses on the east side of Sheldon, they claim has a stream or water below it. When they get their water below their house, it's pumped out. Couple, three of them have a pipe, they pocket out, comes across on my side, goes down the ditch. The south side of Sheldon, he just barely had it, I mean, it's not even a ditch, he can mow it real easy. But the water comes from the south end, comes across the road, goes down my ditch. So my ditch gets amused.
Says something Scott makes you look into.
Yeah, we'll talk to Brad in the morning, public boards, and get a hold of him, and see if we can get him to help.
Did you leave your contact, can you give your contact information to them, and they'll follow up with you and help us?
You can get my address in here. What do you need, else?
If you'll just come over and get your phone number.
Yeah, I don't really need that back, I'm okay.
That's all right, I don't need it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? Leon.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm Leon Waichman, 1915 Quell Run, and Jackie Clark is with me.
1898 Southeast Coles Run.
And we're from Main Street, and two weeks ago, we wanted to give you some information about Trick or Treat down Main Street. I gave David a couple sheets to put in your book so you guys would have them to help answer questions, and would be happy to talk to you about any other things you might have, anything. Number one, I want to appreciate Tabitha a lot because it seems I said five to seven, it's four to six, so she bailed me out. Thank you, Tab. Okay? So we'd be happy to answer any questions you guys might have about Trick or Treat down Main Street.
So it's kind of, what's, where are the stores or the businesses that are participating? Kind of where?
Most of them, at this point, and help me out there, Jackie, if you stand at the corner of Main and Central, you go south about one block, is about where it is, going the south way. The other end, it comes all the way up to YMCA, YMC parking lot.
Good.
Right up there. And I don't think we have hardly anything on East or West Central there, do we?
Nobody.
No. And before, I know what's happening, is like the sheriff has set up right there on, at the corner of Central and Main, right there, we'll have a speaker on some other side. This is going to be the first year they're actually having a contest for best costume there in the interest garage, and there's some ladies who have taken that on themselves. We're not involved in that at all, but it's kind of a neat thing. Some of the kids will really like that.
Good.
Other questions we can answer?
Appreciate you coming down.
Well, and...
Getting this information, I think the city's been getting this out on the website and the Facebook page, as have you guys.
Well, we've usually had, what, Jackie?
Well, I think they have about 45 right now. They have from 45 to 70.
And those are vendors who are actually going to be handing out candy and that kind of stuff, and I think two years ago, how many kids do we get?
We've, usually, well, we estimate, because it's hard to estimate, how many people downtown? About 3,000 people, some kids.
So there's a bunch of kids out there, gives them a good place to go without worrying about getting hurt or anything like that.
Sure. I know my daughter always, we always appreciated it when my daughter was trick or treating.
Oh, it's a lot of fun. It's a lot of fun.
I appreciate you guys doing it, and thanks for bringing us some information.
Thank you.
Anyone else here for public comment? Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. On tonight's consent agenda, we're considering the approval of City Commission minutes from October 4, 2021, special City Commission minutes from September 29, 2021, and considering the approval of appropriation ordinance number 09-21 in the amount of $4,017,348.22. Do I have a motion to approve?
I move that the consent agenda is presented, be approved.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We don't have anything in old business, so we'll move on to Agenda Item Number 11. Make sure my iPad's right this time, yeah. Consideration of Butler Community College Fire Training Facility Agreement.
City Commission, the city was approached by representatives from Butler Community College to discuss an addendum to the existing lease agreement at the fire science training facility. The original addendum, or I'm sorry, the original MOU was done in 2011 and provided the current live-fire training facility, that is, to the north of Station Number Two. The proposed agreement will allow a second live-fire training facility to be built west of that facility. There's actually an existing concrete pad that is located in the, kind of in the rear parking lot where this live facility will be constructed. The primary reason for the facility, the existing live-fire facility has, is still used and has its purposes. However, they learned that it is, they can't really do live-fire training exercises at higher temperatures that emulate a real fire that they would actually be firefighting. And the reason for that is, the facility, as it was built, has rivets in it, and when they get up to temperature, they have been known to pop, which creates a safety issue, obviously, for firefighters. The proposed facility won't have rivets, and in addition to that, it will also have the ability to develop different training scenarios that currently are not able to be done in the existing facility. So it gives the ability for some enhanced flexibility to accommodate different training scenarios, as well as a little bit safer opportunity. Secondarily, some of those training scenarios will allow the fire department and the fire science department to explore and train in basement-type fire scenarios, as well as different upstairs scenarios that they would have to deal with if they were to respond to different fire situations. Presently, the city is not being asked for to participate in the cost of constructing the facility, which is estimated to cost about $14,000, although the city has, since this was done, we've kind of discussed that, and we believe we could participate to the tune of $7,500, which is approximately half of the facility. We will be able to use it as needed for fire exercises. The only big barriers to that really will be the need to construct items to burn. So whether that be pallets or, this facility will actually allow for pallets to be constructed or built such that they can burn from the ceiling, and so we could then, obviously, free materials and place them in such a way that the fire department can train for different scenarios. So it will actually be a win-win for both the college and the city once it's completed. The fire science department will actually construct it, and we will obviously inspect it and do the work related to that. So other than that, that's all I have. If there's any questions, I'll take this.
How big is this?
Um...
I'm just curious.
Yeah.
I'm not 100% sure, but the footprints they've talked to me about pretty much take up that whole concrete parking area. In the map, you see the yellow shaded.
Yeah, I see that, but I'm kind of going off the size of that.
It's four 20-foot ConXes plus one 40-foot ConX.
For 14 grand?
Yeah.
That just sounds awful cheap to me.
Well, when this was done originally, the price of shipping containers was much lower, so...
So they're going to build it out of ConXes?
Yeah, shipping containers.
Okay. How many, Matt?
Four, four 20s and a 40.
For 14, okay. Good luck.
Do I have a motion? Um, yeah, give me a second, let me find it. Please, please. I move to authorize the city manager to sign the Butler Community College Fire Training Facility Agreements.
Second.
Motion, a second. Is there any further discussion or questions? I think this is a great opportunity. I've had a chance to visit with the fire science team at Butler, as well as with our fire department. This is going to provide some new training opportunities, and, at least based on the quote, they got pretty solid pricing, so I'm anxious for them to move forward with this, so...
If, so, if the price has gone up, is, are we still just in for 70 or $7,000?
$7,500, yes.
7,500?
Yeah.
No matter what the shipping containers cost? If they're 10 grand, we're still in for seven?
Yeah, I mean, the original negotiation was that the city wasn't going to be able to look for anything, but because we were going to be able to use the facility, I offered to pay $7,500. They haven't expressed a concern about the price of shipping containers, so I suspect that if that's an issue, they may come back and we may talk.
They've got them secured, so...
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
If they've already got them bought, then mute point.
Okay, we have any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Gen item number 12, consideration of special use permit application for 1425 East Sixth Avenue.
Yes, Mayor and Commissioner, this special use application is for an accessory apartment to be constructed at this property located at 1425 East Sixth Avenue, which is outside of the city limits, but within our TJ. Butler County Commissioners reviewed that application, voted to recommend approval, as well as your planning commission who held a public hearing on September 23rd and voted 7 to 0 to recommend approval to you as a City Commission.
Do I have a motion?
I move to approve case number 21-06-SUP, requesting a special use permit for an accessory apartment at 1425 East Sixth Avenue, and that ordinance number G1358 be approved.
Second.
Motion, a second. Any questions or any further discussion? How close is this new addition going to be to the riverbank?
Um, here's a little drawing they...
Yeah, I know, but that new, you've got 24 foot where the garage is, and the new apartment's going to be, what, three foot from the riverbank?
So we're just, we're just recommending and allowing the use. Butler County will review the setbacks, will go permit, the floodplain, all that, which, from what I understand, floodplain's not an issue here. It sounds like they've been in communication with county, so it sounds like they've got the hooks.
Okay. Any other questions? Roll call, please, Tabitha.
Commissioner Guthrie?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis is absent, Commissioner Badwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
Yes.
Mayor Yob.
Yes. Gen item number 13, consideration of 2022 salary schedule.
Sorry, Tabitha, go slower. Each year, the City Commission approved the salary schedule, brought them back staff. We have done a review and provided a new schedule for 2022, write a list of all the positions available. Changes to the schedule for 2022 include the addition of the rec leader and park technician. Those are the two positions requested by the City Commission in the budget process. And then also, we changed the two lowest-level positions in the, in the previous salary schedule to, from 13, I believe it was 1326 last year, or this year, to $15 an hour and 1538. That allows us to be a little more competitive with our local market and with other cities, and so we made that change. The financial, sorry, the fiscal impact on it will be about 1.8 mils for the two positions in parks and rec, and that was approved as part of the budget process earlier this year. The $15 an hour change will not have an immediate effect on the budget. All of our current employees are making 15 or more. We made that change when we, when we started advertising some of these positions to try to be more competitive this year. And if we are able to fill some of those positions in the, in the near future, there would be about a $3,000 difference between what it was in 2021 and what it will be in 2022. If you have, oh, sorry, we did have a couple other changes. We have a foreman position that was in existence before. It's the same as a chief operator in the water treatment plant and the wastewater treatment plant, but the distribution area had not had the foreman for a while. After we hired Bert Peck as the superintendent earlier this year, he recommended that we promote another employee to the foreman position to fill that so that there would be a backup in case he was ever absent. Also, we have, we used to hire in all of our public utilities operators, operator one, even if they didn't have one of their water certifications or wastewater certifications. We've now added in an operator in training position. This allows us to hire somebody without those certifications at that minimum level, and then give them a promotion as they receive those certifications throughout their first couple of years working for us. Also, final change, and actually a second change that came recently, we have changed the administrative assistants in engineering and parks and rec to the office administrator and, sorry, I have to look at what they called her. Oh, I need to get that out of my head. No, she's, she's the office administrator now. Parks and rec is a, I believe, a parks and recreation specialist, because those two positions do a little bit more than the administrative assistant positions, we require a little bit more of those two individuals, and so their department directors have talked to the city manager and requested those changes. So there was no change in salary at this time, but eventually they can make more as they move on. And I believe that's it. If you have any questions, that's my address, please.
Do I have a motion? I move to approve Resolution Number 2930, a resolution amending Resolution Number 2910, which establishes, established 2021 salaries and wages paid to various employees of the City of El Dorado, and allocated the various funds of said city, charges endeavors for the payment of compensation of wages of all city officials and employees.
Second.
Motion, a second. Is there any further discussion? As you guys make these adjustments at the, at the bottom level, up to $15 an hour, did, were there equity increases as well for those current employees to bring those up?
Looking at the salary schedule this year, because of changes we made last year to the current cover schedule, compression really wasn't an issue. Most of the people in the positions above were, there was enough distance that it didn't really have an effect this year.
Okay.
So we had very, this was the year to do it with the most, with the least fiscal impact.
Perfect. Thank you. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We don't have anything on for discussion items tonight, so we'll move on to City Commission Advisory Board updates. Commissioner Guthrie? CTC met, and we got results back from the survey about, for the residents, asking what they felt about 150th, and everybody was really happy. The results came back with just kind of what do they want to see and whatnot. The one thing that sticks out to everybody's mind is Prairie Ford. And I don't, we've talked about naming and stuff at the CTC, so, but they, the results basically say that they want us to see, let's do something like Prairie Ford every year. I believe we all also heard back from the businesses saying that, I guess there was one business that traffic went down that day, but everybody else's traffic was up and was happy about what the survey from, back to Javon said, so. Had a, had a, you know, real good meeting, everybody was real enthusiastic and excited about what happened. We got a little bit of, I've been pending a, and I know he told me I could say this, pending a, some money from the federal government as a grant. Damn Music Fest will be back next year, is what Ross said in that meeting, so. So some good things coming. Javon's really got a handle on what, I think, what he's wanting to do in the future. Really think he's, he's planning, he's planning spring right now and trying to get it all together, so we had a good meeting. I'm really proud how that's, that group is.
together, so we had a good meeting, I'm really proud how that's, that group has changed. The dynamic of that group has changed since adding Javon, and I'm, and I'm really glad to see that in that group, so.
Thanks, Matt.
Parks and Rec hasn't met, and I'll let you talk about the EFABC.
Okay. We did have an EFABC meeting last Wednesday. I had an opportunity to kind of, we went over some budget stuff, the, the budget's looking pretty good right now, they're, the, they're putting together the packages and pricing, the 10-year mark is hitting, so they'll be reselling their skyboxes and some of those advertisements. So, right now, the, the focus of the administrators for the EFABC are kind of putting together what the, what the maintenance costs, long-term maintenance costs look like, excuse me, the two, five, and 10-year mark, so that they can price their, their fundraising, their capital, their capital ask, and their box sales accordingly. We talked a little bit about events at, at the stadium. We left there tasking, maybe David, I can't remember who we tasked with, with getting ahold of a turf, Doug Law, one of the, one of the members from Butler was gonna to work with the turf person to get us some platforms. We talked a little bit about the fact that Javon's working on a potential event there, and so we've, we've got the, the protectors for the turf, they put that on there. They're getting the turf priced out now for the replacement, which will happen in a few years. We had a survey or a check done on the turf this last year, and it still has life left in it, you know, since that field's not played on every day and practiced on every day, there's still life left in the turf, so. The original thought when the stadium was built, that they'd have to replace the turf about every 10 years, it's likely at this point that that gets pushed out to 12 or 13 potentially, which is good. But we are looking at those, those, the protective shield for the turf, so that you could set up a significant stage on the turf there and be able to have events at the stadium. David informed the group that, that Javon has been tasked with bringing stuff to El Dorado, and that's, that's one of the places that we're bringing them. And so, the, the EFABC is excited about that, I think they're excited about expanding revenue opportunities at, at the stadium, so. What did I miss?
Somebody took my notes, so I don't know what you missed.
Freaking David.
No, I think you've got it all.
All right, I think that's it. I think, I think I got it. So, it was, it was a good, I felt it was a good meeting, and like I said, financially, we're in a, they're in a pretty good spot right now, a lot going on, so. City managers report.
So, the November general election is quickly approaching, and so to help voters prepare, the El Dorado Chamber of Commerce will host a commission candid forum. It was originally advertised at the Civic Center, but that will be here in the commission chambers tomorrow evening beginning at 5:30. The reason why we're having it here is because we can hook this up for live broadcasting to Channel 7. We will also be broadcasting onto Facebook and social media outlets as well. So, if you were planning to attend, come to City Hall. If you're not able to come to City Hall, tune into Channel 7 or the city's Facebook page, and you can watch it live. We will also tape it and make it available after the fact, so you can watch it as well on all of those outlets as well. And we'll probably also let people know when we're gonna broadcast it again on Channel 7, 20 on the election, that way they can tune in at a specific time. So, that'll be coming tomorrow. The Parks and Recreation Department has closed restrooms in parks for the season to protect them from the temperature, which could be dropping, you know, any, any day now. Let's see, if you've been out to the River View Park, it is now open, there's just a few final touches that are, that are remaining, but once those are completed, so basically the swings and park benches will be installed once those arrive, but other than that, the playground is ready to go. So, I think it's 24 feet from the top all the way to the bottom, so it's, it's pretty amazing, a playground there that, if you haven't seen it, you should go on the channel. And the city is now accepting online registrations for youth basketball, so if you know of anyone or, yeah, if you know of anyone that would like to participate in this year's basketball program, please have them, get that information tuned in, or turned in, rather, they can visit the Parks and Recreation section of the city's website to get more information on that. Trick or Tree Down Main Street's already been mentioned, so I won't mention that again, but the EHS Student Council will be hosting a car show. Unfortunately, I don't have the date in front of me, but it's, I believe it's the same day as, you know, I should, no, okay. We'll find more information about that, unfortunately, the date's not on there, so I can't tell you that, but I believe it is for Halloween, and that's about all we have.
Thank you.
No problem.
We don't have any executive session tonight, so if there's nothing else, I consider a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Thanks, everyone, have a good night.